Anyway, that's what I'm... You sound like what? Hey, is he going to get his...
Good afternoon, board members, staff members of the audience. Let the record show that today is November 4th. The time is 3:04 and we will now call the Adams County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Before we approve the agenda, the county administrator would like to add a closed session and that will be numbered as, um... Well... All right, board members, with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So...
Motion before by Mr. Pugh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Agenda is now approved. We will write, now lead us in the invitation and the pledge. Our heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the beautiful weather, for the rain that we've got and the sunshine. And not too much rain. Thank you for sparing us from the natural disasters that many of this country has received. Dear Lord, we thank you for the fact that we live in a country that has democracy. We thank you for our right to vote. We thank you for our rights to select the... Our leaders to the best of our ability. Lord, we now ask you that they are allowed to proceed in an orderly and lawful manner. In your name we pray. And dear Lord, please protect our, uh, our public safety folks and our sheriff's department and all those that take care of us when we can't take care of ourselves. But we're blessed those in our community that have suffered recent losses. Bless those in our community that are sick and infirm. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will now open up the meeting to citizen comment. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing... Is there... Oh, there you... There you are. Ms. Monk, please come forward and give us your name and address.
What do you prefer, bagel? What would you like me to do with this bagel?
Take it off so we can hear you. Yeah.
Awesome. Good afternoon. My name is Sunny Monk. I live at 2288 Lexington Turnpike, um, in Amherst, Virginia. Um, I'm here, of course, to speak on behalf of Second Stage, your neighbor, closest neighbor across the street, and, um, and to thank you. I often come and ask for something, but I'm not here to do that today. I just want to thank you for your continued support and friendship to Second Stage and to tell you that Second Stage is helping and busy. Uh, our tenant studios are full with the waiting list. Bane's Books and Coffee is lean right now, but they decided to open at 7:30 in the morning, earlier, um, till 2:00, to make sure that you all had had a moment to come get a cup of coffee or a bagel or, you know, on your way to work. So, 7:30, you're, you're in now. Uh, our fire market moved back to only online and pre-orders, uh, this week, which means you can go on the website and order from about a dozen vendors, um, everything from field pickles to, uh, ground beef and chicken and eggs and breads. Delivery will be on... Still on Thursdays, but only from 4:00 to 5:00. So you can drive up, they'll drop it in your backseat and go on home with a good supper. Um, it is also shifted to year-round. This online pre-order is something that particularly our elderly have enjoyed and used, and, uh, they are so glad to be able to continue that through the winter. There's also online holiday market with all kinds of, um, food goods, but also, um, crafts items and artisan items if you would like to do your holiday shopping that way. Through really generous support from Centra Foundation, uh, we are able to continue also our second help-in program, which is purchasing of foods from our vendors at the end of the market and delivering those to the food insecure friends and folks elderly shuttings, um, at , around the county. Um, we delivered to Meals on Wheels and to the Mount Pleasant Food Bank. We used to work with neighbors, helping neighbors, but they are working the sweet work. So, um, for instance, last week, we delivered 50 pounds of ground beef to the Mount Pleasant Food Bank. She had no beef and no meat, um, in her stocks. So she was, was, was thrilled. We're beginning to see party rentals. There's a birthday party scheduled for December 19th and we are asking them to, uh, please follow whatever safety precautions are in place at that moment. The equipment has arrived, uh, to show outdoor movies. Uh, we're working with the high school to rent their larger parking lot down below, um, so that we can accommodate more cars. Uh, as you know, the feasibility study for the daycare center is proceeding and, um, and we're at the next step. Thank you for the historic designation for the building. That won't happen until spring. In all these uncertain times, one thing is certain. We appreciate your initial trust and your friendship and you're welcome now and we will continue in every way to try to deserve it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Monk. We certainly appreciate everything that you all do and your commitment to our community. Please, please share that with your board and, and the vendors. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? Seeing, hearing none, we will close this citizen comment and move on to the consent agenda. If there are no changes, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion on the floor by Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The consent agenda is now approved and we will move on to first reading of adjustments to the Service Authority Authority and service rates. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Yes, ma'am. Good to see you all. Um, you should have in your packet draft ordinance 2020-0015, which addresses the, um, water, uh, water service rates adjustments for 2021. This is the first reading of that draft ordinance. The second reading will be at the, uh, the second supervisors' meeting this month, at which time there will also be a, a public hearing of, in front of a, a joint meeting of this body and the Service Authority Board. That, that public hearing has been public notice twice, so we're, we're in good shape there and as part of the note, that's, um, all we need to do today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Any questions, board members, of Mr. Hopkins? All right, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board schedule a public hearing regarding the ordinance for November 17th, 2020, for the supervisor.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martinall, if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next we've got, um, ordinance 2020-0014, first read.
Good afternoon.
Uh, within the subdivision regulations of Amherst County, family divisions of property, uh, parcels are allowed and require different and usually less regulations. Family divisions are allowed for a member of the immediate family where defined as any, as any person who is a natural or legally defined offspring, stepchild, spouse, grandchild, grandparents, sister, or brother or parent of the owner. Currently, the regulations do not allow for family trust to use the family division regulations. This means we're allowed a beneficiary of a family trust to receive property for a family division, uh, and closely follows the language of state code. The planning commission recommended approval of this request. This is our first reading and we're asking you to, uh, move this forward to a public hearing at the November 17th, 2020. Any questions?
Ms. Bryan, any questions, Mr. Bryan?
Madam Chair, I move that the board forward ordinance 2020-0014 to a public hearing on November 17th, 2020.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Bryan. New business, we've got our consulting contract.
Well, this is pretty much a repeat of last month. Um, during the discovery process with our new, uh, fit consulting firm, we discovered they were not going to be able to meet, uh, the deadline for digitizing our, uh, new enrollment or, uh, benefits enrollment packet by December 30th. Um, and so we mutually, in a, in a positive way, decided to part ways and we moved on to the second, um, placing firm in the ROP, which was One Digital, and we have negotiated this contract with them. Um, we added some language to the contract that made it very clear what our expectations are, so there would not be any confusion, and, uh, the cost is $500 more, which I will cover in my current, uh, HR budget.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions? All right, we appreciate it. Thank you.
I need you all to direct the county administration.
Yeah, we're gonna get a motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, board members, we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board direct the county administrator to approve and sign the final contract with One Digital for benefit of one person.
All right, motion on the floor by Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is approved. Thank you. Ms. Rogers, did you have any questions of us or...
I'm good.
All right. Uh, the Service Authority Board member, member compensation.
Well, yeah. Um, a couple of Service Authority Board meetings ago, the, uh, concept of, of compensating Service Authority Board members was brought up. At the last board meeting, the, uh, Service Authority wanted, or requested, or was wanting forward a request to the supervisors that $100 per month decompensation for non-elected, non-supervisor, uh, Service Authority Board members, and that is a, uh, that's the request from the Service Authority Board for hopefully adopted motion to, uh, enact that motion next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, board members?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve compensation of citizen, non-elected Amherst County Service Authority Board members of $100 per month.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion's approved. Thank you. Moving on now, county administrators report.
Yes, ma'am. You should have in your packet before you all the project status report. Uh, the only things I want to highlight in there are that with regard to the Central Virginia Training Center, all of next week is a charrette that's being conducted in the evenings down at the Alliance Building in downtown Amherst, or downtown Lynchburg, um, to vet the proposals that have been, uh, suggested by the public and various stakeholders. So I would invite all the board members and all the public to show up. You know, there's display of words and so forth where people would write on them and people that would explain and receive comments about what the future of CDTCC ought to be. So that's all next week, every evening next week. Um, with regard to the transfer station and, uh, Boxwood Farm Convenience Center, uh, tree clearing is underway and the next step now is to remove the stumps and, uh, so we have begun.
Which ones is that?
Uh, the stumps at the transfer station have been, or need to be removed. So the trees have been cleared on the area, construction area. And there is grading underway now at the, uh, Boxwood Farm site.
You said transfer station. Did you say transfer station then? Did you mean the convenience center?
No, we're doing both at the same time.
All right, so what's going on with the transfer station?
The trees off of the site have been taken down. The stumps need to be removed. There is grading at the Boxwood Farm Convenience Site, because it was mostly clear already.
Okay, okay.
So, we're, we're on our way. Uh, the transfer station should be done, uh, we've been told they can get it done within a year.
I, I have a question. Uh, brought to me by a constituent, they're asking about VDOT and regarding the entrance to our landfill. Has that been worked out? Have you had correspondence with them or is there any, even anything to worry about at this point?
We did not start until we had everything resolved with VDOT.
Okay.
So yes, sir, we've got the approvals that we need, the designs that we have, and we're going forward. With, with that, are there, you know, unless there's no questions with regard to the other items?
You go broadband, some sort of...
Go ahead, Tom.
Go for broadband?
Yeah, Amherst Central Rocky Mountain Towers, oh wait, installation and trans.
Yes, sir.
But that's still related to SCS?
That's the SCS, the wireless that we've been doing for the last year or so?
The SCS is no longer run, one they sold.
They have been purch... They still exist, but they've been purchased by River Street. River Street is a much larger company that is focused on, uh, fiber optic cable.
Who's more focused on putting those transmitters on the town?
SCS. So we, we're still expect them to finish that out and make wireless service available while we pursue fiber next. So we're trying to create some redundancy and some competition and get as many different companies involved as possible. When we have the, uh, the broadband build-out plan from lit communities here by the end of the year, we'll go out for a bid for proposals to fulfill elements of that plan and we will solicit, uh, River Street. We'll solicit from, uh, uh, well, anybody in here, Comcast, Firefly, uh, and, and anyone else interested in putting fiber in the ground for us.
Um, I have a question. What is, uh, I see fiber, I think it's fiber going in the ground, all along 29. Have y'all seen that? I'll know it.
What is that?
Facebook.
Uh, Facebook or Google is what I understand. They're in VDOT rights of way. It's not something that they get our approval for or share information with, uh, on us. Uh, I don't know. Jeremy, have you figured out who's actually doing it?
I, I was just wondering, I mean, I just...
So that's not the, that's not the, that's not broadband? That's not...
That's not ours.
It is, but it's an interstate line that's not designed to go to us.
So does it help us?
No.
No, it's passing through.
Okay.
And, and then while we're talking about broadband, I, I've received some, some people have contacted me regarding, uh, the extension of Comcast. There's many people, like I've said before, in District 4 that they're close to Comcast, but they will, they will not extend it down the road. So I hope that's part of our, uh, when we get the solicitation back from, uh, was it Lit Communities? That, that will be part of it. That certainly helps out.
Yes, sir. We, we do plan to solicit Comcast. Uh, I don't know how responsive they can be. We attempted to, we tried to include them on the original CARES Act funding, heard nothing, even though I called and spoke with them personally and encouraged them to submit any extensions that they wanted to. They did not. And even now, we're trying to get them to lay cable out to the landfill, which will solve our internet problem out there. And even that is, uh, slow. So they're rather disappointed. But yes, sir, they will be included.
Point, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Wasn't the Lit Communities study supposed to be done in October?
That was my question.
Uh, well, every time we talk to them, it gets pushed back a bit. Uh, right now, we're looking at mid-November for their plan.
Was there a contractual invitation?
Well, that plan has to be provided by 30th December.
No, I thought that I contracted them that they had to complete their scope of work by, I thought it was mid-October.
I think their goal was mid-October. I would need to pull it up, but my recollection was they had a drop, they had a drop dead date to have us something in November and that you don't get paid anymore if they don't show up by the end of the summer.
So...
What about the status of, um, was it Central Virginia Electrical Co., uh, they might have a different name under, what's the deal with that? Have they started construction? Are they, are they putting ca... Because they only got two months.
Yes, sir.
They have two months to get all that done. So I'd hope they, I, what's the status for that?
They, uh, still need to finish up their approvals from AEP, where they're hanging on AEP poles and, uh, VDOT, uh, rights of way. So they are still resolving those. Um, I have communicated to my contacts in both of those organizations and they have pledged their assistance to speed it along. And I have gone up the chain in VDOT to get, uh, the appropriate people at that level and they have also pledged their assistance to move these things along speedily.
So where are we on our, these deadlines that the Commonwealth gave us of December 31? Were they extended?
No, ma'am.
So are they...
We have two different deadlines. The, the original CARES Act was 30th December and then Governor Northam, you know, issued the other money over the course of a weekend and gave us until 25th December.
So even shorter timeline?
Yes, ma'am.
So, all right, so are they gonna, do, what legal recourse do we have? They gave us the money, they gave us a, a, a deadline that's just not doable, it's not meetable, it's not even realistic. Do they get the money back?
Yes. We don't spend it, they give the money back.
And our contractors are aware of that, that that's in their contract. So, we, we've done what we can as quickly as we could have.
So then what happens? We turn around, we see the contractor because they didn't finish in time?
The contractor is obligated to finish. They have a timeline where they don't get paid for anything they do after December 30. They are also under construction performance bond and if they don't actually finish everything by January 31, we pull the bond and move on to the surety. But they still don't get paid for anything after that, but they're still obligated to finish without getting paid during the month of January. Would that explanation make sense?
Yeah, you know, what you're saying makes sense, but it is the most misleading, disingenuous political ploy I think I've ever seen, I mean, I've ever seen beyond the worst supervisors.
Where are we? I don't know. We're gonna talk about where we're all at the CARES funding.
Yes, sir. That's departmental reports.
Any other questions about the, um, county administrator's report and, and as far as broadband is concerned? Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
The next item, ma'am, uh, is with regard to, uh, Second Stage's desire to, uh, seek status on the historic registry for the old Amherst Baptist Church across the street. Um, and, uh, I, I bring that to your attention. Uh, there is nothing in the least that prevents them from doing that. Going forward with the designation will of course assist them in seeking grants and other things to help maintain the building and improve it. Um, it places no restrictions on us, uh, with regard, uh, to how we use the building. We could even still tear it down if we wanted to, even with that historic designation. And so what I'm, what I'm asking for the board to do is simply, uh, approve that, approve that effort to obtain the historic designation. I just do want to proceed with that. Just because it's not prohibited, I want you all to know that that was happening and for you all to put your blessings on it and, and that's what I seek.
Board members, any questions?
Well, I, I definitely support, um, the non-negative state national registry. I, I think it is important to know that, you know, we can use county money to do anything we want to, but if anything involves state or federal money, there would be an approving process, it would be a charge. So, that makes me just point that out, clarification, that as long as we use county money and not state federal funds to do it, we can do whatever we want to, demolish it, do whatever.
Yes, sir, and that, that concept is captured in the least, in the least, where, uh, Second Stage is prohibited from obtaining any money if it does place any obligation upon us or of any kind, not just fiscal obligation. So, uh, this is not, uh, but yes, we're, we're aware of that and are, are careful about that.
I'll make the motion that the board approve Second Stage Amherst effort to obtain national historic registry status for the old Amherst Baptist Church building and direct administrator to assist at no expense to the county. Motion on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm finished.
All right, departmental reports.
County attorney's report.
Okay, county attorney.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very quickly, uh, as expected, our bonds priced on the 28th. We got approximately the savings that we expected and are continuing to move forward per the previous resolutions of the board. Just wanted to let you know, they sold, uh, before the election and thank goodness, because who knows, the bonds are gonna sell this week. We're supposed to close on the 18th.
Good. Any questions? All right, now maybe on to departmental reports. Purchasing? Mr. Proppit?
Thank you all. It seems like I may have done this not too awful long ago.
It seems like I may have done this not too awful long ago, maybe a year or so, but it was before Mr. Martin's on board, and hopefully it can be helpful. I had placed some information, not much has changed since I had done this before, but I will plan to just scroll through the information that I did have on your agenda and have some brief comments. But just again, the Virginia Public Procurement Act was established, adopted in 1982, and then Amherst County Code was established, which establishes its local rules and authority for the procurement of goods and services. And we have developed a purchasing manual, which is a document which contains regulations for policies and guidelines for local procurement. The, our county code establishes the purchasing department, and is to be operated under the direction supervision of purchasing director, and who serves the following entities of the county. So he's purchasing director for the board supervisors, the school board, the service authority, and the EDA. I won't go through all these, I've listed some of the duties of the purchasing director, which are set forth in the county code, and those are, oh, I didn't, I don't remember what I'm talking about, there's the duties. Go and read all of these, if you don't have any questions, they're there. You have any questions or comments today or anytime, just come by and see, give a comment, we'll talk about that. But basically, we purchase or supervise the procurement of goods, services, insurance, and construction, and we are responsible for the sale of surplus property. There are, on the next page, page five, there are additional duties which are set forth in the county code of the purchasing director. Now, I've listed on item six, other functions that we serve. These aren't stated in the county's code, but we manage the county's liability insurance program, including all the claims for automobile property, general level liability insurance, provide, I provide the contract administration for the services we've privatized, such as HVAC maintenance and cleaning services and maintenance contracts on various equipment and systems. And act as owner representative for construction projects as deemed appropriate. Also provide contract administration for the county's real estate assessment process. I have one full-time staff person. Well, okay, wait a minute, I'm jumping in, I'm thinking it. This, okay, that's what I stated are the duties set forth for the purchasing director. My job title is deputy county administrator and purchasing agent, and I have listed some of the functions that are stated in my job description. I won't necessarily read all those, I'm sure you all can read them, and, or if you've got any questions, please let me know. The next page continues with those. And then the next page is a staffing, I have one full-time employee there which, whose job title's administrative assistant and purchasing technician. There are some of the functions enumerated there from that person's job description. We also have a part-time person who is assigned to the finance department, but works in both departments, sort of splits the time there as a liaison coordinator person in dealing with those functions. I'll point out balancing duties and resource. The county code does state the purchasing director may delegate authority to purchase certain goods, services, insurance, or construction to other county officials if such delegation is deemed necessary for the effective procurement of those items. And that is something that is coordinated, because obviously we can't directly handle the procurement of all of these items, but are responsible to see that the processes are conducted properly. I've run through, this is pretty much, I've made a few minor adjustments to, from a year ago. There are some minor updates that need to be done to the county, our procurement regulations, which in the process should have that done shortly. Just mentioned in the last three, four months or so, we've been pretty much inundated, prioritized with trying to deal with these procurements involving the CARES Act and meeting those requirements, most especially the timeframe they've given us. That's my overview of the purchasing office. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Prophet. I mean, you have done a phenomenal job, and you are the biggest repository of historic, institutional knowledge of anybody in this county. And while county administrators come and go, you have stayed here with a steady hand on everything that makes Amherst successful, and this board can't thank you enough for everything that you've done. Board members, anything else to add?
I was gonna echo that, probably you've been here a long time, since I was a wee little intern, and you've been here a long time. You've done a staple to the county, and we appreciate the work that you do. And I can tell you, you make sure the eyes are dotted and the titties crossed, but you always get it done in a timely fashion, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
One question, though, so the county code says that we award contracts on half the board supervisors and the school board. Do you do the purchasing for the school?
Yes.
Oh, you do.
The purchasing for the county. Or supervise school board, service authority, and EDA.
You're very good.
Yeah, that's why I was talking about delegating.
We appreciate it.
David, I'd like to say thank you for the many years you helped me, when I was, in my profession in law enforcement, and a helpful hand that was always there to help us through, no matter whatever, for as hard as, for many years you were there, to help me from the start to the finish, and truly you did, thanks on the job, and truly appreciate your commitment not only to the county agencies, but to the citizens as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All those comments remind me of my age.
Just a little takeaway, yeah?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Treasures board?
That's for information, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
That's for information.
Parks and trails update, I definitely want to hear about this. Good afternoon.
We received a quote from our engineer to repair the trails about 45 days ago, to repair the two spots, would be about $149,000. The board allocated $100,000, and public works spent $8,352, thereby saving $91,647, of which I'm here today to ask for. The various other projects which I've outlined in your reports that I would like to spread around, including garbage cans, picnic tables, and other things for all of the parks and trails, to use this money that's been allocated towards the parks through the fines and forfeiture fund. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Board members?
A couple questions, though. I believe when we originally appropriated this as the Ty River Bridge, also a priority, but I didn't see it included in this.
Several reasons. First, we have a maintenance technician physician we're interviewing for now, that would be primarily for the trails and parks, I'd like to get their input first to determine if we can put that out for an engineering RFP and quotation, if we can do that in-house.
Second question, was our Parks and Rec director consulted on this list?
She has input in this, but not this particular list, no.
Because I also sit on a survey that's related on to the Parks and Recreation Board, and that board has been coming up with a list of priorities, and I wouldn't want us to approve something that's contrary to the Parks and Rec Board. So at least before, I think we should authorize any address to, Mr. Christian should really consult with.
Yeah, I've given this a lot of thought, and I agree with you, Mr. Martin, but I think that step one to me was, you know, we gave you a project, we told you something needed to be done, you were very creative, very innovative, and using our own resources were able to save this county, therefore the taxpayers, a lot of money. I'm referring to labor and rewarding good behavior, and in setting people to continue to do that.
No doubt.
Yeah.
Yeah, and thank you so much, I mean, that excellent work going in doing that for, you know, huge savings. I just think that the Parks and Rec directors have been broken into how that money gets spent for parks. That's not the one.
So if the questions are, do we want, I mean, to me, it's either, you either continue, you take these savings, you put them into Parks and Rec with collaboration between the stakeholders, or you take the money and you put it back into the general fund. And that's what I meant when I said I'm believing in rewarding good behavior.
Well, this funding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rogers, is from the five unfortunate forfeiture portion that's allocated to Parks and Recreation.
You are correct.
So we go back to that, right, but it could either go back in that segment, or we're gonna say we're gonna use it for something in Parks and Rec.
Well, I think it has to be in Parks and Rec.
It actually, I mean, it can be used for other things, we actually have the ability to use it for other things. If I can make a point, which you were talking about the Ty River Bridge, that concerns me a little bit, because that could be an expensive project, anytime you deal with bridges.
We've had an engineer inspect it and say it is safe, but the decking boards are starting to rot on top.
So that's gonna be a decent expense to replace that, because lumber is extremely expensive right now. And I would like to, I agree, Mr. Martin, I would like an input from Sarah Lou, she's certainly been here a long time, has a good grasp of things that we need, and I appreciate what you've done, there's no doubt about it, but I would say we need to hold off until we get some information from Sarah Lou, and then we could also look and see what the price is to replace the decking boards on Ty River Bridge before we spend any of it, because that could be the...
Yeah, I mean, exactly, because at the last Parks and Rec board meeting, I believe one of their priorities was the playground at Mill Creek, which they figured they might have to close, because of the condition of the playground. So that might be a priority over picnic tables or whatever, I just think they should consult on that.
The other question I have, and Mr. Prophet might be able to answer it, but the bridge that crosses the James River down near the Lee property, we have been replacing some items on that, and I don't know what happened, but we're gonna have to come up with another payment on that next year, or another lump sum of money to finish that project?
Yes, we did move part of it into the next fiscal year. So we're working on the top, the decking and the railings this year, but underneath that, we move to next year. So be happy to run this through the Parks and Rec Board, just for the board's education, just so you know how responsibilities are assigned. For the most part, Sarah Lou is in charge of the programs of Parks and Rec, and I have asked the public works director to just maintain facilities and equipment for her, so that that gets taken off of her plate, because she's had added to her plate tourism, the libraries, the museum, and really programmatic kinds of things. And that's why this is a list of equipment. But absolutely, the Parks and Rec Board is charged with melding all of those issues together and setting priorities, and we will certainly bring this list to down and get their input.
So I have no problem using the money for other things, but again, thank you for saving that money, just kind of get the input down to where it might be best. I do have one further question, and this may be from Miss Wiltz. My understanding is the five forfeiture funds, that's essentially, a lot of that's all ticketed right now, and 80% of that goes to the sheriff's office and 20% goes to Parks and Recreation. Do we know how that fund's doing right now? How much coming in? Exactly, it's down for whatever reason. I think next budget year, we might not see as much coming in, and we're gonna have to deal with it.
And with new laws, the new, some of the new laws that are in place?
The law may have arrived at it.
Yes.
So what do you need from us now?
Well, at this point, I believe the sense of the board is that you want more input before you approve a list on how to spend that $91,000, that it will stay in the Parks and Rec Fund, that you're prepared to spend that, but you want more input from a larger group, and we'll bring that back to you.
I think that's an accurate assessment, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, and you may know the answer, Mr. Martin, do Parks and Rec have goals for like the next three years and what they would like, and what's the vision for Parks and Rec?
They're working on that.
Okay, because I think that that would be important to know, and so I don't know if she can get on a department spotlight as quickly as that is developed?
A part of these came from Sarah Lou, specifically like the gazebo at Rosa's Motel and Hunter's Vine, she wanted that, garbage cans, picnic tables, just general upkeep. Some of these also came from our survey we did back in July, where a lot of this was provided by taxpayers to say, we'd like to see these at the parks. And while I don't have an official list from the board or from Sarah Lou, this was talked about in time, but not this particular list.
With regard to your question, at the board's planning retreat, they asked that the various boards, commissions, committees, councils come and do spotlights, and I put them all on notice, all of their clerks and all of their clerks have put their chairs on notice, that they'll be asked to come in and spotlight, but we haven't yet set a schedule. We can certainly put Parks and Rec up, put them on notice, that they can be the first up as soon as they're ready, with their own planning documents. But yes, they will all come before you and tell you where they stand on fulfilling their responsibilities.
I think it might be this discussion, then as soon as she has it ready, let's hear it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CARES Act update.
We have given out $340,000 in small business grants. They are working on the duct cleaning and the HVAC projects. We haven't paid a lot of that out yet, so we're in the process of making it. The IT department has acquired quite a bit of teleworking equipment, at about $83,000. We've been able to reimburse the schools $257,000 so far, and put a down payment on the restrooms, public safety supplies and equipment, that's a variety of things, but we did buy three scanners, two for the sheriff's department, and one for the court. We're currently working on lock systems right here to keep, to be able to mitigate people coming in without their masks. I had three in one week in my office that just, yeah, because I'm taking off my information, and some of them are just don't want to wear them. So we don't have the ability, even though my door says not first, you must wear a mask, Well, we do, but they come in the door before...
You know they're there.
We know we're there.
So they're just about now.
Well, at that point, they, they spewed off of the counter that my staff works on. So, we have come up with a lock system, I think, that we're gonna put in place for all the departments, that we'll be able to at least know if you can't, there's a mask right there, I'm gonna put a pocket outside the door, and, and be able to mitigate them coming in. We're talking about public coming in, not employees coming in, although employees are supposed to have their masks on, so, yes, it's the public, and we don't wanna like turn them away, and I see a lot more public now than I did before in my department, but, um, I also don't wanna expose my, my staff who can't see them till they're already all the way in the, in the office. For my office, anyway, I think that's the same across the board for a lot of the offices. You just can't, I mean, like, HR, they're already in the, in the room when they come in. Can your door be locked? It can, but that would waste a lot of staff time getting up and down, so that's what we're trying to work on, door locks. But we, we put money aside for scanners in the public safety line, it just seems like that doesn't really work for this, for the buildings, because of the public, so stopping them at each individual door is what we're planning on doing, as opposed to the, the twenty-five dollar scans. Because then we would need staff that we have to pay for, to man that all day long.
Okay, so, in the end, it looks like there's two point nine million dollars left.
Well, yes, I mean, we, we've got savings set aside of about, almost a million.
So, yeah, when can the...
I don't know, until the end of the year, until the end of the, so you guys have, we either spin it, or you need to move it to spend it on something else, because if I make those entries, I may be backing them back down, as, as people ask for things.
Well, it's, it's not a number of...
Yeah, we're gonna have a real serious discussion next time.
I think we should start it now.
I mean, they're under contract, there's nothing, I mean, I've asked about, you know, I asked Mr. Rogers about to see that contract, I mean, not only do they have the five hundred thousand dollar contract with us, like through this care act, they just got one point three more million that we have to manage as well.
One in the schools is another hundred ninety-two, four seven five, can't that be?
Oh, I think, I think she'll probably, she usually gives me, um, she gathers her invoices and then gives me a bill like once every couple weeks.
I'm, I'm working on this, don't worry, we don't wanna do any of that.
Absolutely.
No, sir. And I think there's, there's more savings than that within our budget, that's just where you guys allocate the money. So let's just say we don't spend, but two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in public safety, for whatever reason, the extra stuff, and then I can go look for that other sixty in the salaries. But I pulled a million between March and June, and I have six months I can pull from this time.
Yeah, I, I'm just...
So I'm telling you, I can probably pull more, I'm, I'm adamant not to let it slip and not get it to stay in our account. There was something I had, oh, there's a slim, we were all talking about the date, so I was on my finance meeting this morning, they're hopeful, but they're not optimistic when the Congress comes back in after the election, that they will approve a stimulus bill that includes the extension of the date to spend it. It's a very slim, like, but we're, we're still hoping, because it's in that package, it's, it's in there to extend it all the way to December twenty twenty-one. But so far, we can't get a stimulus package through with that in there. So that's where we are, and we, you know, we have a lot of stuff that's supposed to be arriving in December, or being finished in December, which is a little, a little harrowing, just to make sure we spend all the money, but we have ninety days after that date to pay it.
We contracted a lot, I'm sure, so that's...
Right, correct, we contracted a lot. There, I mean, Southern Air is under contract to do all the HVAC and all the duck work. Sebag's under contract for the broadband. We have ordered the restroom, we have ordered an ambulance, we just gotta get it off here.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Wiltz.
Uh, I don't want that, so...
Maybe a little more things for the general?
We wanna, I wanna ask you, we wanna ask you a couple things about the general fund we have.
Madam, Madam Chair, I, I've gotta go, my father's truck is broke down, I gotta get him, uh, I'm not gonna be able to attend the close session. If you all do anything, could you please refrain from taking a vote until the next meeting, would that be all right?
Sure.
Absolutely. Okay, because I, I've gotta go get him, and, uh, that's what the call was just about, so excuse me.
All right, thank you, this will be...
Get his car, just broke down.
Okay.
I have my little truck. I think it's just ordered by my parents.
Oh, that's not funny. Um, so this is your normal report, what I wanted to bring up is we have a couple of assigned funds that have kind of run their course. The slug failure, we fixed the slug, but we have some money left at the end, and it's just been sitting there. I'm, I'm asking to unassign it and put it back into your general fund. The Parks and Recreation money that says Mill Creek Restaurants? It would be my suggestion to combine that with the fine and forfeiture monies, since it's all Parks and Rec. And then the Phelps Road incentive? Unless somebody else knows something, I, I think we're done with that, I mean, we've paid the service authority for what they needed, we could roll that back into the general fund.
I'd have to do that, just...
We paid what they told us to pay for that project, so, I mean, I can leave it there, it's just a suggestion to put it back, so we don't have multiple assigned funds, it's just keep rolling with the same balance forever and never get used. Those assigned funds, it's just a directive from you all to tell me to do it. The committed funds, you can also do that with, or, as Mr. Pugh pointed out, like, with the fine and forfeiture money, even though you say it's for parks, you can change the commitment for those funds. Doesn't apply, that's, so, not that you want to, I'm just saying that's what you can do. But those have been enacted by your, by, by board motion and fund balance actions and stuff over the years, so those kind of stay where they are, or they're separated because of, they're stipulated for a particular thing, like the tourism money, that was money from the friends of the depot that didn't get used, so it's just there in case the depot needs it.
So I have a question. So you're saying that there is fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars for Mill Creek Restaurants? Is that separate from the fine forfeiture?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that fund was started several years ago, when we were anticipating having to put in a drain system and have to pump uphill to the drain field, and we were starting, we were saving money to get ready to do that, and, uh, and since then, since that fund was started, you all assigned the, the fine and forfeiture money to the parks, and, and so we've got this sort of double entry, and all we're really doing today is putting you on notice that the next time you see the general fund availability report, unless you all object, those top three, three items, one, two, three, four items...
Those public works will stay in.
I don't think that's...
Yeah, that's...
Oh, that was, okay, so, yeah, those top two, and then Phelps Road, just won't be on it anymore. The total doesn't change at the bottom, it's all still in the general fund, we're just gonna stop tracking those things because there's other places for them.
The, the slug failure and the Phelps Road incentive will become part of the available funds, but the, the parks one...
Right, that rolls into the fine forfeiture twenty percent fund.
Yeah, so these are funds that were outdated, it's on the, for whatever reason, they're not needed anymore, or just...
The slug failure was for the learning lane?
No, 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 I was...
I don't know, I couldn't understand.
The, the grass was sliding down, uh, I think it was, uh...
I remember it being fixed, but I don't remember it.
I remember seeing it.
Right at our chain.
Yeah, so it had to be, the dirt had to be replaced, it had to be reseeded, it was back in the days of Teresa Nupps, and, uh, it was, we always got put off, hire a contractor, then it would rain for a week or so, then we'd have to wait, uh, because it was too slick to get the equipment out there. Eventually, it was resolved, and we've just been carrying this thing forward.
We're talking about slug foot on your...
On a dam.
Yeah, I get that, so that, that funding will go to where would you move it?
To general fund.
Just to your available...
That's where it came from.
Okay, Parks and Rec will go back into the fine forfeiture of Parks and Recreation. We're leaving public works, and we're gonna talk with the file about Phelps Road incentive, if that's not needed, that will go back to the general fund. I'm assuming it's cool to see, I think he's gonna say where it is.
All the rest I would say.
Okay, so this is...
Don't touch that.
Real different account.
It is, and we just kind of wanted your okay with it, it just makes it clear.
So next time when you see it, it's gonna surprise, why does it look different?
Okay, follow me. All right. Move them along.
All right, anything else?
No, unless you all have any questions about the general fund report.
No, I don't believe we do. Uh, general fund, if we know all that, we already did that one. Now move on to citizen comments, anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing, hearing, now we will close citizen comments and move on to closed session. Mr. Logby, I think that Mr. Ayers would like the language to make a motion, if you could say it.
Yeah, I think that you'd be looking, Madam Chair, for a motion pursuant to section two point two, three, seven, one, one, subsection A three of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, to enter a closed session for the purpose of consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county, specifically related to a property near Route sixty west of the town of Ambers.
Motion informed by Mr. Ayers, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Prose no, motion passed, this will be a closed session.
Yeah, I just think that, um, I'm sorry.
Mr. Rockwood, could you provide us with language to come out of closed session, please?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that you are looking for a motion pursuant to subsection D of section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. And let me grab my language right here. That would be a motion that only such public business matters as were lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of FOIA. And secondly, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by this Board of Supervisors. This has to be roll call vote, Madam Chair.
Mr. Prophet, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Parker.
Uh.
Moore.
Ah.
Moore.
Uh.
Ayer.
Uh.
That's right, we show that Mr. Peters is not here. All right, board members, is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion for by Mr. Ayers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's no, we're going to add a closed session, and we will move on to manage members of the board. Mr. Ayers?
I have a question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am. I've been meeting with the citizens about the intersection of 131 and 21. PDOT has plans to make safety improvements at an intersection, yet it's going to be four years from now. I requested Mr. Rogers be in contact with PDOT to see if there's any interim measures that could be done because accidents are continuing to happen. Haven't heard back yet, but I'm just wondering if you would press the board.
Well, we certainly appreciate that, Mr. Mark, because it's a dangerous place, and you're right, seems like every week there's something new there. But thank you for your initiative there. Ms. Moore?
In the same sense, I told Mr. Rogers about incidents that were happening at the end of Seminole and the cemetery, the meat cemetery there, where multiple times over the past few years, incidents have happened where they knock over the vents and run over the tombstones and stuff, and how we can work with PDOT, so make some moves there.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anything. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion for by Mr. Martin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's no meetings adjourned. Thank you.